Good evening, everyone. We're in a call to order, the July 15th, 2013 city council meeting. You can please stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, God our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. We have a large consent docket this evening, items A through L. Do any councilors wish to remove any items from the consent agenda, consent docket? Not, is there a motion on the consent docket?
I move the approval of the consent docket.
Second.
Motion second on consent. Consent dockets approved five to zero. And it takes us down to public hearings, and our first public hearing is to receive public input regarding a request for text amendment to allow RV parking in mobile home parks. Mr. Dorman, do we have good notice?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful.
Good evening. Patty Evans, Development Services. This text amendment for the Land Development Code is the addition of Section 114 to Chapter 23, which would allow RVs in the mobile home zoning district. The city has received a request from a mobile home park owner to allow the RVs in the mobile home district due to the need for temporary housing for the oil and gas industry. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Not at this time, sir.
Thank you. We're going to open up the public hearing. We did not receive any requests to speak in favor or against this, so we will open and then close the public hearing, and I'll just have to come back up and give this Planning Commission's recommendation.
At its regular meeting on June 18th, 2013, the Planning Commission found that the text amendment is not, was not needed, and voted four to zero to recommend denial to the city council.
Any questions of staff?
Not at this time, sir.
Is there a motion on Planning Commission's recommendation?
I would move to accept Planning Commission's recommendation and not approve the text amendment.
Second. I have a motion, second.
I think I said that correctly.
I have a motion to accept Planning Commission recommendation with a second. Any discussion?
So we would vote yes to go with what the Planning Commission said?
Correct.
Yes means no.
Say that one more time, please.
A yes vote on this motion would be accepting the Planning Commission's recommendation.
To deny.
Which is to deny.
To not change the Land Development Code.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
Not at this time, sir.
All right. Let's vote on the motion. That motion passes five to zero. Our next public hearing. Receive public input regarding a request for text amendment to the Land Development Code, Chapter 23, permitted uses in the IL District. Have good notice?
Yes, sir.
This text amendment is for the Land Development Code, Section 23, 160A, the uses permitted by right in the IL Light Industrial Zoning District. The amendment would allow the uses of wholesale trade and retail trade in the IL District. The wholesale trade is complementary to the other industrial uses allowed in the IL District, and the retail trade can involve the types of businesses that are not as compatible as those businesses in commercial districts. The text amendment will not cause a safety concern and will encourage appropriate development opportunities. At this time, wholesale trade is only permitted in the CG, Commercial General, zoning district. Currently, retail trade is permitted in the CS, Commercial Shopping, CB, Commercial Business, and CG, Commercial General districts. And this text amendment will allow complementary uses to those existing uses that are now currently allowed in the IL District. Are there any questions?
Questions of staff?
Not at this time, sir.
Okay. Thank you. We'll open our public hearing, and again, we do not have any requests to speak in favor or against, so we'll open then close the public hearing and...
Okay. At its regular meeting on June 18th, 2013, the Planning Commission voted four to zero to find that the proposed text amendments are needed and recommend that the city council approve as presented.
Questions of staff?
Not at this time, sir.
I'd make a motion to approve Planning Commission recommendation.
Second.
Motion second to approve Planning Commission recommendation. Any further discussion? And that motion passes five to zero. That takes us down to general orders, and our first one is the annual report from Friends of Lake McMurtry. Mr. McLennie?
I won't be giving the report, but I am going to introduce people. About a year ago, a little over a year ago, we were approached by two different groups to enter into public-private partnerships to help operate and manage city facilities, and one of those was Lake McMurtry Friends, and the other one was Friends of Multi-Aarts. Tonight, I'm going to introduce the Assistant Manager of Lake McMurtry, Jared Aviles, and Jerry Fleming, who's a board member, and they're going to give the annual report per the agreement on Lake McMurtry.
Good evening. I want to thank you for giving me a few moments of your time this evening to listen to the report on Lake McMurtry Friends. Again, I am Jared Aviles, the Assistant Manager. I want to apologize in advance, you were probably expecting our park manager, Grady Lester, to give the presentation. He unfortunately had a family emergency to attend to, so I'm filling in. And again, this is Jerry Fleming, one of our board members, who's assisting me this evening. So, like I said, I work for Lake McMurtry Friends, and I want to talk to you all a little bit about what we've been doing, what we plan to do, and what's currently going on. As you can see, let me get this actually going here. There, that's better. This is a quick slide about a few of the things we've accomplished over the first year. One of those things was installing gatehouses into Lake McMurtry. We felt that these gatehouses will help us capture some lost revenue, which is one of our goals, is to make the lake self-sustainable. Also, we wanted to add a friendly face to the public when they enter the park. We felt that these gatehouses would allow us to do both of those things. Those are going to be up and running August 1st. Our second big accomplishment that we're pretty proud of over this first year was our two professionally-designed disc golf courses. We had Mr. Tom Lowry come out, who is a professional disc golfer, design these courses. We constructed them. We began construction in December. We finished our south course, as we like to call it, in April. We had a grand opening ceremony on the south course, and Mayor John Bartley came out and threw an exceedingly well disc off of one of the tee pads. I do have to say so myself.
That's the first incorrect thing he said so far.
But it was a good ceremony. We had a lot of people attend, and our second course, or known as our north course, will be opened up very shortly. We're almost finished with construction on that. Ideally, we want to bring in national tournaments into Lake McMurtry and host, have that for a venue for the national tournaments, and also bring that to the national tournaments into the city and the surrounding areas. A second, I wouldn't say accomplishment, but events that we have carried out to help foster public relations with the community are our June Bug Jog and Spring Celebration events. We had a spring celebration event, which was a free admission to the public, to allow them to come into the park to showcase what we offer to the public. We offered an Easter egg hunt. We had a lot of other activities, such as a reptile petting zoo, and this, again, was a free day for the public. That way, we could just showcase ourselves. We had about 70 people attend this. It went over really well, and we hope next year to do it again. Our second big event that we hosted was our June Bug Jog. This was a family fun run that we put on for anybody in the community that wanted to attend. There was a registration fee. We kept it as a non-timed event. We wanted it to be very open, very friendly, and so we had a variety of people attend. We had mothers pushing their children. We had people walking their dogs in the race. We even had some serious runners. I had a gentleman bike 10 miles into the race, run the three miles, and then bike out. And he was 60 years old, so it was pretty incredible. So we had about 60 participants for that, and it was a really good event. We hope these events snowball, and we hope to add more events to showcase ourselves out to the, to the public. Some of the ongoing events out of Lake McMurtry that are constantly, constantly going on are our volunteer trash cleanups. We invite the public to come out, they pick up trash for us, and we feed them good food. It's as simple as that. So those college kids obviously attend these. This is a great way for us to get that park clean, keep it clean, increase the health and longevity of that park. Blue thumb water monitoring, that is water, excuse me, water quality monitoring, where we monitor the streams that flow into the lake. We also monitor the lake itself. We look for dissolved oxygen levels, pesticides that could be in the water, and this gives us a report on how healthy our water is, which is obviously very important to us. This allows us to carry out lake management practices to improve the longevity of the lake. We also give educational programs. We gave one educational program last year to a group of students from private school in Tulsa on environmental sciences and things of that nature, and we hope to continue to do more of that. We constantly have OSU research out there that's been going on for quite some time, and the OSU students come out, they want to do a lot of low-impact observatory research on plankton or migratory birds or invasive species, and we just assist in any way we can with that. And we love gaining knowledge about the species in the land around us, and that helps us to do that. We also have quite a few mountain biking events, which is obviously why I put this on the ongoing slide, because the mountain biking trails out of Lake McMurtry are particularly unique. We get a lot of mountain bikers from around the surrounding community and even out of state that come in and use our trails. And so we have several small events and a couple of big events each year. And we also have a partnership with the Red Dirt Peddlers, which is a volunteer mountain biking group that helps to maintain our trails, and we work with them to maintain the trails, and then we let them host mountain biking events out at the lake. So it's a really good partnership we have with them as well. Some of our future plans, in the next year, we really want to focus on improving what we already have. The RV sites are one of our bigger money generators. We want to add more sites. We currently have 16. We'd like to get that number to about 30, and we want to improve the existing sites, and we want to improve our tent camping sites as well. We are going to have kayak rentals in place this fall, just another amenity to add out there, you know, get lost for a day at Lake McMurtry. You come into Lake McMurtry, you're going to get lost for a day. That's what we want. We want you to have a good inviting-friendly experience out there. We want to have more events, again, more foot races. We're going to have a fishing tournament this fall, and we'd like to, we've even been contacted with music festivals to use us as their venue, so that's something we're looking into as well. Some of our longer-term plans are to hopefully have summer camps out at the lake. We believe the lake is an ideal place for that. It would also be great for the community to have that option, to take their kids out there for the summer. We want to put in natural playgrounds. We want to use man, non-synthetic materials out there, such as wood, rope, mulch, sand, to put in playgrounds to have for the young kids as well. We don't only, only want to focus on adults, we want to focus on everybody out there. And one of our bigger, long-term goals is a nature center. We feel that Lake McMurtry is an ideal place to have a nature center. It goes along with our mission of protecting and promoting the lake, and we feel that it'd be a great, a great asset to the community itself, and granted, putting in a nature center does require a lot of funding, a lot of time in gathering that funding, so we're going to exhaust all avenues possible to make that happen. And in the meantime, if somebody accidentally dropped a little bit of money in our lap, we definitely wouldn't be opposed to that either. And just lastly, just a couple of items that we'd like the city to consider is possible revision on two city ordinances. Currently, there is no alcohol in the park. We want it to stay that way, but we would like the possibility of maybe obtaining a permit for special occasions. Some events, such as these foot races, bike races, music festivals, they approach us with the possibility of using us as their venue, but do not want to based on that fact. Now, we're not looking for hard liquor. We would just want a permit for low-point beer, and that way, we could try to capture some of that revenue. And just one other city ordinance, currently, to my knowledge, it's 14 days or nights out of the lake that you can camp. We get a lot of interest from the community, especially RVers, that want to stay the whole summer, and unfortunately, with the current city ordinance, we cannot let them. So if we could possibly get that revised to allow a longer, long-term stay out there, we would definitely look into that avenue to capture some revenue, so. And this is a great picture of our grand opening ceremony. That is Mr. Grady Lester on the left, Tom Lowry, our disc golf designer in the middle, and I'm sure you all know the person on the right, very good-looking man there.
Second incorrect thing he said tonight.
Second incorrect thing he said tonight. And again, I'm Jared Aviles with Lake McMurtry, and I want to thank you for your time on behalf of myself and the board, and we look, we look forward to working alongside the city to carry out our future endeavors, so.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have questions or...
I was just going to ask if you all had any questions for the staff or the board? Any concerns?
You might want to limit the photos, John.
We'll remember that for next year.
Yeah, for, for good PR purposes.
Well, for future reports, I think it would be interesting, to the extent that you want to, although it wouldn't be, you know, it's not a deal killer for me, but if an actual report, to let me know, get an idea of how you're organized and how things have been going, I think that would be beneficial for a future report.
Sure. We turn that in every quarter.
Right.
To John McLennie, and the last one we turned in, we turned in in the middle of June, which was the end of May. Our fiscal year-end is the same as the city's, so it just ended June.
I just think the community would benefit in this forum, public report on it, and I just also want to say, it's just really exciting to see all the people you're bringing to the table.
Thank you.
The work that you've gotten done without our financial commitment or our resources is exactly what we were hoping for when we created this entity, so I applaud your efforts, and that, I'm impressed with what you're doing. And as one councillor, just one, but both of those items, requests for ordinances, I would certainly be interested in hearing what we might, could come up with to address both.
I would too, Mr. Weaver.
And that was going to be on my list was to...
We're working on it.
I was going to say was to make sure, we've communicated to proceed to dig into those.
Excellent.
I'd love, I'd like to thank, you know, the board and the staff. You guys are doing wonderful things out there, and they didn't quite express how difficult that disc golf course is. And it's not just from lack of talent, it's just tough.
Yeah.
It's, it's a lot of fun, and I, it's been getting good...
It has been. It has been. It's been getting pretty good play. The college population's dropped off, obviously, but our locals have still been playing it constantly, so that'll, the college population will pick back up, you know, this fall, so. And with our second course opening up right, right at the beginning of school, we hope it just blows up with, with people.
What you guys have accomplished inside of a year is very impressive, and I also want to thank you, I think councillor's whole, thank you for the work that you and the board put in.
We appreciate the opportunity.
And I agree with councillor Weaver is that the results that you've shown are the perfect example of that partnership, that you guys are able to accomplish things and do things that this, a city cannot do, but a private group can, and it's showing the benefits of what can happen, so, so thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Before we move on to the next one, I'll just let you know that we are working with the Friends of Lake McMurtry on both of those ordinances, so we definitely think, we agree with them, that they need more flexibility, and really, things like how long you can camp at Lake McMurtry probably shouldn't be written into an ordinance to begin with, so we're going to see what we can do to make that more flexible. Next item on the agenda...
Next item would be the annual report from Friends of Multi-Aarts.
And I want to introduce Bonnie Hammond, who's the current president of their board, and Bill Miller, who is the manager of the facility, and they're going to give you that report.
I'm Bonnie Hammond, in case you didn't know which was which, Bill or Bonnie. Show me what to click. Okay. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity for this past year. I'm very proud of the Friends of Multi-Aarts and our staff, and the job that Bill has done for the city of Stillwater this past year. We have quadrupled the offerings of classes at Multi-Aarts. We finished our first year in the black, which I was shocked, and now we're gearing up to really do some serious fundraising. Some other things we've accomplished, we're looking at creating an affiliate status for organizations that are art-related in the Stillwater area to provide a meeting place for them, free of charge, on a donation basis. We have worked out a schedule of rental of the facility, also allowing all nonprofit organizations one free meeting use per year, so if you have an organization that meets throughout the community, they can come to Multi and meet free for a year. We would also be very interested in the exception to the alcohol regulation, because we would like to explore the social aspect of renting our facility to raise revenue. But we have a very busy committee working on grants, and now that we have a year of nonprofit status, we're going to get really busy on that, so we're very excited about this year to come, and I'm going to turn it over to Bill, because he's primarily responsible for all of the programming. Our director, Bill Miller.
Thank you. My voice is going, so bear with me.
On the back.
All right. First of all, I want to say thank you to the city. It's been like a landlord tenement thing, because we have a building, and I want to thank Jim Scott, John McLennie, Larry Devers, John Mayhem, all of them have been so good to us. We call for something we need to fix, boom, they're right there. So with that, I just want to say thank you, and thank you to the city council. We're going to do like a top 10 list, like David Letterman-type thing, and with some of the things that we've done this year. This is our year-one top 10. So we're going to start with, we tried to get more community involvement. We've done the big event. We've had 25 college students out there helping us to spread moach, because we keep care of the outside area too. You can slow down, I'm not going as fast.
It's doing it all by, it's big program itself.
All right, well, okay. I can't keep up with that. We, we do have, let's see if I can, on our, we had our ribbon cutting ceremony, we had the chamber out, and they came and did a ribbon ceremony, kind of, cutting ceremony on last July, and our gift gallery is now open. We have over 50 participating artists that sell there. It's a very unique shop for Stillwater. A lot of people come in there, because you can't buy those things just anywhere. We have hand-blown glass, everything is handmade. A lot of them are local artists from Stillwater. Not everybody, but a lot of them are. Some of the pottery that's done here, we've gotten an artist back in Buckdallahide. We also do special events, birthday parties. One of the neat thing about the birthday parties is they can come in, they do any type of artwork, they get to decorate cupcakes, they love it, it's just another venue. We are involved in other organizations, such as Ollie, Lifelong Learners. Here, they're doing a Stephen Stone class. We have, one of the things that we introduced this year is the homeschool groups. We have a lot more classes for homeschoolers. There's over 400 homeschoolers in the city of Stillwater, and so we're trying to keep up with them, and the slides are up. We have a new logo that we just got for our one-year anniversary. Eric Braggs is the logo competition winner. We opened this up to Stillwater and Oklahoma. We've gotten many entries. This is the one that we came up with. The colors can change, but we're going to be putting up a new banner outside of Multi-Aarts, which we did get approved from the city. We tried to keep it in our contract. One of the other things that we've done is with the CameoCo, our sister city, we have exchanged programs with them. Oh, look at that little girl up there. We exchanged programs with them. Last year, we sent them paintings by Oklahoma students about Oklahoma, and they sent us back paper dragons. This year, with our summer art camp, we're doing the Wizard of Oz, and so we're going to send them painting things of poppies, and they're going to send us something back in exchange, so we're trying to keep that exchange going with our sister city. We had a make-a-mug day for Dad, and we're going to continue this with special events, where you can see, they came in, they decorated a mug, and it was very successful. A lot of people liked that. They were wanting to do that maybe for Mom, but we definitely did it for Dad, and it was also make-a-mug, make-a-dish day. And here's our summer art camp. We do this every year. We serve about 150 students, all the way up to 250 students, depending on how many enroll, and it is a, it's going on right now. We still have openings. We had David Payne's truck come down from Channel 9 News. Again, the whole theme was the Wizard of Oz, so you have tornadoes in there. We did tornado safety, and we had them come down and talk about it, and, you know, we talk about grants and everything. We did get a grant from the Arts and Humanities, to what are Arts and Humanities Council, and that helped to do the presentation that we had with the David Payne group. And then, some of the new classes that we're adding, and this is what we're very excited about, we have all new classes. Chess Academy, this is people making beaded bracelets, and we've just added a plethora of new classes, and we're constantly adding new classes, and so you can always come down and take a class. One of the exciting things that we're doing though is, this week, we're going to have, for crazy days, we're going to be out there on Thursday and Friday, and then Saturday, we're having a one-year big celebration for the whole community to come out, from 10 to 2:00. We're going to have free food, activities, demonstrations in every area. It's going to be so crowded there. I had to even call the library to tell them we're going to probably be using their parking lot instead of them always using ours. So we're really excited about all the new classes that we're adding, and lots of people using the Multi-Aarts Center. And again, I want to thank you guys for your time, and for, hopefully, we can continue this agreement that we have, and any questions?
I'll just pick on one point. I love what you're doing for the homeschoolers. I really appreciate it.
Yep.
I think that is fantastic.
I appreciate that.
I was homeschooled myself growing up.
Yeah, it's a, it's a large population out there, very large population.
I think it's great.
It wasn't lost on me that you said you quadrupled the classes. I wouldn't have been surprised if you'd have come in here and said, in our first year, because of our organizational issues and all the things we were trying to deal with, you didn't have as many classes, and to hear you say you've quadrupled...
Quadrupled.
Is really impressive.
Yep.
And again, I'm just excited to see these partnerships really resulting in great work.
The increase in the number of classes, is that, is that a teacher-driven, or is that a demand-driven? What's the starting point for classes?
We're, we're looking at different options, when, you know, like with homeschoolers, is something that wasn't done before, so we're calling homeschoolers in and seeing what they need, and I've had some homeschooler teachers say, I used to do this at home, but it would be much better doing it. So it's sometimes teacher-driven, it's sometimes people want that class. Right now, we have a movie workshops going on. It's 17 people just coming in for that one workshop. It's a week-long workshop. There's a lot of people who want classes during the day that are retired or stay at home, and it, so there's lots of things that are going on, but it's, it's not just one thing that's driving it, so.
Our board took the mission of making it more used facility and a facility for the entire community, and so when we started looking at programming, that's where we started from, is what can we do to get people in here? And it's one of those things, careful what you ask for, because this really has worked. And so now, we're looking at bringing up, our next big project is bringing up the glass lab and having a working-class studio again, and so that's the number-one priority, because we have a fabulous facility that I think has been underutilized for a long time, and so we're finding ways to utilize all areas of the facility.
Congratulations on a great year.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yep.
Thank you for the quality of life, the improvement of quality of life here. It's important, and for the Friends of Lake McMurtry, same thing. Quality of life initiatives are so important. You make Stillwater a better place to live.
It's our privilege.
Thank you.
Enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is proposed public-private partnership with Stillwater Area Sports Association.
Well, as you can see, both of these have been enormously successful, even beyond what staff would have imagined could happen. There's really no downside from the perspective of what we've seen as far as working with these two groups. And so we've been approached recently by another group, the Stillwater Area Sports Association, about the possibility of doing the same thing with our recreation sports leagues, and they, this wouldn't be just a typical traveling league like we've done in the past where, where people are constantly going out of town, but this would basically take over the recreation programs that we currently offer in terms of sports, both adult and youth, in the same kind of public-private partnership that we have with Lake McMurtry Friends and the Friends of Multi-Aarts. And while this might, might be a little bit different for Stillwater, it's not different in terms of what most communities do. Just a, a quick list of communities who operate a... Just a quick list of communities who operate a majority, or at least a great deal of their sports programs in public-private partnerships like this are the city of Edmund, Broken Arrow, Moore, Norman, Enid, Bartlesville, Muskogee, Yukon, Chickasha, Sand Springs, and Stillwater, because we currently have an agreement with the Soccer Association where they have operated our soccer programs for a number of years without any, anything from the city other than providing the facilities. So this is not an unusual thing, and the success of these public-private partnerships has definitely been shown with Multi and with McMurtry. So I'd like to introduce Kevin Fowler and Carolyn Wallsted, who are going to talk about the possibility of moving forward with something regarding sports. And if the council is interested, we'll do as we did last time, we'll negotiate an agreement, and we'll bring that back to you sometime in August, hopefully, and seek your approval.
Thank you for the time this evening. I've asked Carolyn Wallsted to join me for several reasons, for support, first of all, I think, and then she does improve the look of our association, don't you think, having Carolyn up here, and also because she's been traveling for the last week and just got back from Maui, and I thought I should make her get up here with me if she's going to get to travel to Maui. But I'm Kevin Fowler and Carolyn Wallsted, we're officers, board members for Stillwater Area Sports Association, I'll call it SASSA going forward, so I don't stumble on it again, but I don't want to conflict with what John had to say, but I viewed it a little bit differently how things came down the pike, and it might take you back a year from now or so, and I heard what John had to say, and that Stillwater was unique, and running our own city-sponsored sport programs. And my history goes back 40 years with Park and Rec, if you will, playing, playing ball here, some great times here, coaching here, so the better part of the last 40 years I have, less than that with Carolyn, but Carolyn and I both have been heavily involved with our youth sports program here in Stillwater. But to hear John talk about the fact that other communities don't have, don't run their youth sports programs mostly, kind of piqued my interest, and it was kind of a put-to-task to, that because the city was saying, the Park and Rec was saying, that we don't want, these public-private partnerships are so successful, we think it needs to be in the youth sports arena as well. So the task then was to, to seek out a group, an association that might want to take on that challenge, and it's big, it's a big challenge, it's a big responsibility, it's very, very important, it's a passion of mine, it's a passion of Carolyn, and everyone of our board members. So we made contact with many of the associations that are involved with our youth sports, you probably know Stillwater Youth Baseball Association, Stillwater Fast Pitch Association, Stillwater Youth Football Association, we contacted Stillwater Soccer Club, they were mentioned already earlier by John as well. And it became apparent pretty soon, pretty quickly, that those, and I don't blame them, that those groups were busy running their own programs, they weren't looking for a global program, they weren't looking to run multiple efforts, if you will, they were focused on their sport. So our attention then turned earlier this year to form an association that, that could come to you on a night like tonight and, and say, we're here. And Stillwater Area Sports Association, SASSA, is a 501(c)(7), akin to 501(c)(3), you've heard about before, the same type of thing, basically. We have our corporate documents filed of record, we have a board established, we put a board together that was representative of all of those entities that I mentioned, best we could. We also reached out to the Park and Rec community as well, and we have a Park and Rec parent that's heavily involved with Park and Rec on our board as well. I say our board, we really have only met informally and on conference calls to date to kind of discuss what this might look like. But we have a plan put in place, we've reached out to many of the groups that John mentioned earlier, the Edmund All Sports, and Bixby Sports Association, to see what they're doing and see why they're successful. I think that it's inherently more and more difficult for cities to run their own sports organizations, sports programs, there's lots of reasons that kind of come into play for there, and Stillwater Area Sports Association is really excited about the opportunity to run those programs going forward. Right now, what Park and Rec is, the city runs in regards, in regards to youth sports is, is youth baseball, youth softball, and youth basketball. So those are the three sports we're talking about in the youth arena. I missed a key component, somewhere in the last 60 days or so, John suggested, John McClany, I said John, just because he suggested that we, we take on adult sports as well, it would, it would make a lot of impact, a lot of synergy there for there to be adult sports in, in the encompass as well. And we've done, we've reached out to the softball community, and we have a board member on our, on our board that's in the softball community as well. So we feel like we'll be well-represented amongst all those sports. Again, it's a, it's a big, big challenge, but SASSA is a candidate, in my view, and we would like to further have discussions with the city and with those people that need to make the decisions on, on that coming into play. So I don't know if there's any Q and A or questions at this point in time, or what we're missing, John, in this, this conversation, but that's kind of what I wanted to communicate tonight, anyway.
Any questions?
The only question that I, that I would have, we have a local group, Stillwater Outlaws, how could they plug into something like this, or would it even, or would they even be on the scope?
In my, we reached out to Stillwater Youth Football, I guess that's, that's my connection there, and they felt like the program that they're running is kind of self-sustaining, they're, the connection with the city was that they, they actually lease field space from the city in the fall to practice on the baseball fields, so that's the only connection, I think, that we would have with Stillwater Youth Football Association. Stillwater, the Outlaws, I don't think that's a, a connection that the Park and Rec handles, and I don't think we're looking to take on a program that the Park and Rec doesn't presently handle at this point, anyway.
Fair enough.
So do you promise after your first year, you can be as successful as MultiArts will be?
Well, we do, you know, fundamentally, the rec programs are very, very important to us, and, and we look to expand on those programs. I, I feel like that there's room to grow, certainly in basketball, but in baseball and softball as well. We, right now, there's, there's three baseball tournaments a year, and there's two softball tournaments a year. The baseball tournaments are tremendously successful. We, we want to, kudos to Stillwater Youth Baseball Association, they've grown those tournaments to roughly 80 teams an event, which is about $20,000 sales tax, just sales tax, without the multiplier factor to the community, it's a huge success, and we do not want to drop the ball in that area either. As a matter of fact, we're, we're working, I, I think the contract with the city, in my view, would be, be more like six baseball tournaments, six softball tournaments. The, the real piece is, and the reason why cities, in my view, haven't, are at a disadvantage in regards to competition with the other communities in regards to their youth sports programs, is, is it's really, money-wise, it's about the tournaments. I, I think anybody would tell you, I mean, it's like OSU Athletics, really, the football and men's basketball kind of drive the engine for the other 15 sports or so. If you don't have those two, then the other 15 sports kind of, kind of, they, they suffer. And right now, the, the city can't really run tournaments effectively for a lot of different reasons. If you can't have tournaments, your leagues kind of suffer, so they have to be kind of in conjunction, and I, I really think we want to do both well, and you have to do both, one complements the other, I should say. So probably a long-winded answer to say, I don't know that we'll come back with huge success like tripling, but we probably won't come back with a request for a permit for alcohol either, if that, if that helps. I don't see us coming.
At least for our youth.
That's right. But the Park and Rec has done a great job over the years, we just want to build on it, and I, I think that we have a good opportunity to do so, and a good plan in place that we'd like to discuss further.
Just testimony, I've been in many of the places that you've mentioned that had the facilities that were available where the league was operated by the private sector, and it's head and shoulders above what we are able to do at present time. In some way, they've been able to manage that, and it's really paid off, and it's, it's a pleasure growing. Most of mine's been in soccer, but I had some grandsons playing baseball over east of here, so.
And Vice Mayor Hopkins, in regards to soccer, we actually have a soccer member on our, on our board, if you will. Soccer looks to do their own thing, as SYFA, Stillwater Youth Football Association there, but they do want to kind of stay in connection with, with SASSA to see how things are going because they're, we're all kind of in it together to some extent. But soccer's a huge thing in regards to tournaments, they look to do that going forward as well. And, yeah, the leagues can't flourish unless you have tournaments, in my view, and there's just a connection there. You can see it, and you, you hear it anytime you go to those successful communities that are running youth, youth sports programs.
And you see their facilities, which really pays off.
Yeah.
You can have those tournaments.
Facilities matter.
You've said you've been communicating with Stillwater Soccer Club in, through this, and I wanted to bring up, just to make sure everyone understands, how long, John McClany, how long has it been since the city has not run, not offered any soccer programs?
Well, we used, it's been at least five or six years. We used to offer soccer for the younger kids, but the Soccer Association has always handled the older kids, so, and they, they took over the, the rest of it about five or six years ago.
Okay, so we've got, our, our community has at least five years of a, functionally a public-private partnership in youth sports already.
Correct.
But it's been limited to soccer.
Right.
Okay. And, I mean, the success of the soccer club, that, that's easy to see, their growth from them is amazing, so.
Without facility, really, I think they had a facility, they could do a lot of what you're talking about, Vice Mayor, yes. All right.
Any other questions?
No questions, I just think this adds to the quality of life initiatives for Stillwater, for young people this time, so thank you both for taking time out of your busy schedules to do this. I know you're not getting paid to do this, so, thank you.
Thanks, Counsel. No, I, I think you're right about, we, we were talking with Edmund All Sports, and they were telling us that, that over the last 10 years, 75 teams, baseball teams alone, have traveled to their leagues to play in their league in Edmund, and 30 softball teams, just Edmund alone, and I think that's the predominant place where our, our teams are going. So quality of life initiative, we have people traveling to those, to those communities to play their league games, and we wanted to bring it in here, we want our rural communities to play here as well, that, to bring them in, and the economic development piece that Lisa would be glad to hear about, and Kristy Morrison, if she were here, that, that just would be huge.
No doubt.
Yeah. That's our goal.
That's our goal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So is what you're looking, are you looking to us for direction or to proceed conversation?
If the consensus of the council is that you want to pursue this, that it would be just like we did with the Friends of McMurtry and MultiArts over a year ago, we would just begin negotiating, negotiating an agreement, and we'll bring that back to you in August for approval.
One thing that this agreement has got to have is some sort of, there's got to be a continued focus on the recreation side, not just the competition side, and that, that's got to be, and I heard that from, from.
There will be, I think, I think it's very important to Kevin, he and I have had talks about that for many years, the recreation side is a vital component of this, and it's going to have to be a part of the agreement, for sure.
And I think we've heard nothing but full commitment from SASSA that this is both, recreational and competitive sports, and the staff's basically recommending that we pursue this contract, we'd like to bring a contract to the council, we think it's another win-win situation for the community, and unless there's objection, that, that will be the course that we're on. I don't think any vote is needed tonight, but I think just a few comments I've heard around the table is very supportive, and based on that, we'll plan to bring a recommended contract back to you.
All good?
All good.
Do you need a motion, or are we, he's already?
I would just add, in terms of, of the success of this and what it might look like in a year, we have, we have McMurtry, which we had no real example of to follow when we did that one, and it's been enormously successful. We have Multi, which we had an example to follow in Norman with the Firehouse Arts Center. With this, no fewer, without, without even looking very hard, 10 different cities who are doing the exact same thing. And so I think a year from now, you probably will see a good report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McClany.
Thank you.
Takes down our last general order of the night's capital improvement plan ad hoc committee recommendation.
And I get the privilege of starting out, so. I will tell you that when I decided to run for council, one of the things that was very obvious to me is that our infrastructure needed lots of improvement, particular water and sewer, so that's what I'm going to be talking about. And when you mention capital improvement, one of the first things people want to know and think about is, what is our water and sewer infrastructure, and where are we now? In fact, when we put together our, our capital improvement planning committee, that was one of the first questions that they asked, and so we went back to a study that was done in, in 2006 by the BEC study, which was a cost of service, and that consulting firm had a plan that they presented to the council the first year I was on the council about the water and sewer rates and how we could completely fund the present and future water and sewer capital projects. The capital improvement committee reviewed those plans in detail and made certain that the capital needs are truly funded before we looked at other needs. Since the cost of study was approved, the council has implemented a rate structure change as own schedule, as was recommended, most importantly, the increased amount on each water sewer bill are deposited to a depreciation account to be used only for water and sewer capital projects. This has made it possible for the council to authorize immediate planning, engineering, and design, and ultimately, construction of many components to solve the Southwest water supply problem that has, we've been talking about in here for the last three to four years. The funding enables us to do the call line evaluation, or enabled us to do it, it allowed us to fund some new valves, cathode protection, and pumps to extend the life of the call line. And if you knew, or if you kept up with us when we had the study presented, we found no major problems with the water line at the time that we run the electronic balloons through that system, so the water line, we, we had the ability to look at it and make recommendations that were needed. We want to assure everyone that when we start discussing the other capital project needs, the city has not forgotten about the water and sewer. Our prior planning and action have secured our water future. The CIP committee then began to reexamine all the other infrastructure and capital equipment needs of the city. Councilman Weaver will give your report now for those capital improvement needs.
Thanks, Chuck.
Counselor, and I kind of, I did a poor job of introducing this, in that, a couple years ago, we did create a, a city council ad hoc committee that was Vice Mayor Hopkins and Counselor Weaver were the two council members that were on this capital improvement committee that had been working with city staff, developing what is it that we need to be doing from a capital side? What are our needs, what will our needs be, how are we going to be funding them, where are the priorities? And so, even though I just did this all out of order, I should have said that before Vice Mayor spoke, that was, that's what this report is from, is from that capital improvement group, Vice Mayor and Counselor Weaver. I apologize, I did a very poor introduction.
Oh, we cover for you all the time.
I know, I know.
We can survive.
We'll be all right. As you said, we've been meeting for a couple of years from time to time to talk about the city's needs for capital improvement, in addition to the water, as Chuck went through. There's a number of items that the ad hocs studied and looked at, talking with city staff about. Infrastructure needs across all government, whether it be parks, library, development services, our safety, police, fire, emergency management, IT, airport, and streets, transportation. We were fortunate, fortunate in this year's budget and last year's budget to try to hit some capital items that we would put into the budget, but the operational budget really isn't sufficient to drive, to take care of most of the larger items, and so we need to develop a plan, just as we did for water, for all these other, other needs. In the context of a couple of reports that the council recently heard, if you'll recall, we had a study session several weeks ago where we had Mr. Pete come in and tell us about our pavement management system, and we heard a report about, you know, there's a way through the assessment of our paving to determine how we best deploy whatever dollars we have to extend the life of our pavement as, you know, in, in a systematic way, as opposed to identifying this street, or that street, or this other street. Having a systematic way to extend the life of our roads and to make our budget go farther, optimize it. So roads are a significant, transportation is a significant part of this. And obviously, we had the Hour Stillwater Group come in about a month or so ago and talk to us about some quality of life issues. So the Vice Mayor and I have been looking at the information that we've been receiving from these other groups that have spoken to us, plus our own work and meeting with city staff. There are a number of projects that I, I can mention, one or two needed fire stations, where our stations are might not be optimal, based on where we see the growth of the city, so that's something we need to address, and that was mentioned by the Hour Stillwater Group as well. We've been talking for years about trying to improve our police department's fleet. In addition to that, we have emergency equipment for some of the other units, so those are big items, but. items, but, you know, we've got a number of buildings that need new roofs, that we haven't been able to incorporate in the budget. So, when, so when the Vice Mayor and I got down to it, considering what Hour Stillwater said, listening to Jason Peake and, and our interactions, we, we came up with three areas that we think we need to develop a, a longer-term strategy for these items, as we did for water. One, I'll just call it multi-field baseball, soccer, softball complex, things like the Boomer Amphitheater, the lakefront boardwalk developed on the southwest side of the lake. You know, when I heard Mr. Fowler talking about our youth sports, I had kids going through youth sports, and it is a quality of life issue, not simply because the fields aren't adequate. I got really tired of taking my kids to other towns-
Yes.
-to play ball. Why can't they play ball in Stillwater? Why can't we do that here? Chandler can do it. Moore can do it. Edmund can do it. Why can't we do it? We need a more robust set of sports fields for our kids to play on, and our adults to recreate. So, that was, that's been something I've been very excited to see being discussed, and I hope we can develop a plan for that. In addition to the economic development ideas that have been brought forth on an amphitheater, or a Boomer Lakefront Boardwalk, that could be really exciting, and that's, and just as the sports complexes, economic development and quality of life. A second group of projects that we, we call our public safety, if we are able to do some fire station work, if we're able to do the, you know, the patrol cars with, you know, get better quality cars, video camera systems, and our public safety communications network, that would be a win for the city, and it's something we need to do. And again, goes beyond any one year's budget to accomplish. And then third, and, you know, I don't know if it's more importantly or not, but with our pavement management system, it's incumbent upon us to get after improving and maintaining and replacing our streets and bridges, traffic signs, signals, sidewalks, walkways, bike trails, and other transportation-related structures. And we've talked about how we wanted to try to connect portions of the city. We've had citizens coming in, talking about how difficult it is because of mobility issues to be able to move around the city. But just as with the pavement management, we have opportunity to make improvements to Stillwater that'll improve the quality of life. And so, what Vice Mayor Hopkins and I are recommending to the council is that based on these three recommended groupings of project, that we ask the, the city council to endorse those three general headings, and ask the city staff to develop a plan for how we might implement those three groupings over a five-year period, and how we might develop a financing plan to accomplish it. That's about all I have to say about that. And I would put that in the form of a motion.
And I would second.
And stand for questions.
There we go. Let's have the questions, Kay. I wouldn't. Three groups.
Three groups.
Transportation needs, not just roads, but-
Not just roads.
Sidewalks, signs, bridges, anything that helps people move around.
Yes. Transportation, public safety, and I'm saying sports, recreation.
So, quality, you said Boomer Lake kind of ideas too, so quality of life?
Right, right.
Transportation, public safety, and quality of life groupings. Okay?
And again, all of those were, well, not all of them, but a significant number of them were discussed by the Hour Stillwater folks when they came and spoke before us. But many of these, Vice Mayor Hopkins and I have been discussing with city staff on the, on the city side for, for many months. And we think it's time for us to start seriously planning on how we could implement moving these things forward.
I greatly appreciate the, Vice Mayor, how you talked about water, and we have a plan that, you know, those water rates are there so that within the next, I remember, how many years, every water line being replaced.
2016 will complete.
And then, and that's the southwest, those projects by 2016, but every water line, every sewer line replaced. We have a plan for that. I, and it, and financially, that's under control. That's there. This is wholly separate. These ideas will not impact, interfere, get in the way of.
No.
And should not.
Should not.
I really like that grouping. That hits, it hits the areas we need to hit on. Transportation, without a doubt. I think most people, when you talk to them, they want, they want better roads, but that's too narrow a focus. It's bigger than that, and so I greatly appreciate the way that you guys have worded it, bigger than that. Public safety, it's one of the things that, that's what city government's all about. That's a core element of city government. And then, quality of life, it's one of those, I, I think, I mean, ever since I first ran for city council, that's one of the things I have been, been harping on. Quality of life is, is not a luxury. Quality of life is a necessity. And it sounds like the different plans, the different things you can put into place, do hit across the community to help with the quality of life, which then leads into, like we've talked about, and you guys probably all heard me say it before, you know, that, that quality of life, that does equal economic development. Transportation does equal economic development. And we just start that circle going, and it grows on itself. I like this grouping. Yes, sir.
I'd like to, if I could, just make a comment. I think some of you on the council are aware of, and probably our Stillwater people are aware, but not everyone else is, that there are a lot of other projects that are a part of the city's long-term needs. There's other projects that Hour Stillwater has identified, and this is not to throw those aside. I mean, Hour Stillwater has looked at the possibility of a convention center in our community at some point. They've looked at the possibility of redeveloping Couch Park into even a, a better park than it is today. They've looked at ways that we could connect our community downtown to the university through some kind of a pedestrian-friendly corridor. And there's on and on projects that could enhance this community. The city has looked at our need, we're going to have to at some point build new buildings to house all of our utility service, our water department, sewer department. We don't forget those. But what we've done through this process, and even though we don't have a detailed financial plan, is to look at what are the most doable, the most critical needs in all of those that you could put into an affordable package and try to do, start doing now, and accomplish in five years, as we planned for those other projects. So, I know a lot of people have heard about some of those other projects, and I just wanted to mention that to say, nobody's forgetting about those other needs. Those are part of future phases. But as I understand this recommendation, it's, these are a group of doable projects that could meet the needs of the most people and do some really great things. Getting list, concentrate on those, and we could find a way to get those implemented, we'll be working toward the others.
There's, there's no doubt that some prioritization took place through, as we worked through this. And, you know, if we could, there's no way we could accomplish all of the things that you, you mentioned. So, we honed in on the things we've been hearing people talking about, what we've experienced, and this, there's no doubt, there's a prioritization taking place, and it'll be tough enough just funding these items and making the list any bigger, and getting it done within five years is a tall order, so.
What I find interesting is, I, I see similarities between this and the, the conversation we just had about youth sports, and how other communities have been doing it differently for a long time and been successful at it. And if we look around at other communities in our state, they've been doing what you just described. Maybe not the exact packages, maybe not the exact projects, but the concept. Have been doing it for quite a while. And Bartlesville is a great example. I believe they just hit their third, their third extension, maybe their fourth chapter of the story is a better way to put it, of these capital projects. They're in their fourth round. They started this in 1998.
I like the word "chapter." This, these three items, these three groupings would be our first chapter.
First chapter. It's a, it's a great start of a story of what is our future. And so, it's, it's tying that all together. Yeah, this isn't, I did not interpret what you were saying as, here is the be-all, end-all. Let's do this and kick our feet, kick our feet up and say we're done. It's, here's chapter one. Is that a fair interpretation?
That's fair.
That's fair. My only thing that I might add, I've been visiting with, with citizens a lot locally, well, a lot here lately, and I, I really got my interest peaked at, at the idea of public transportation. I know OSU does a good job with it. I don't know what it would take. I don't know if it's something that we could even afford to do. But I like your, your comment about chapters, and I'll just, I'll just chew on that for a minute. Maybe a future chapter is where we have more cooperation with OSU, where we, we take up the burden, because I have a lot of kids that come through my store downtown. A lot of those kids go to Meridian Tech. And I think a vehicle from Stillwater proper to Meridian Tech and back, I think would be a great thing. And, and I think, kind of the way you said about the scope, you know, it's kind of the, we can't really address everything all at once, but if we focus on these certain areas and kind of grow from there, I would really want to explore public transportation. And, and is it doable? Is it, is it feasible in this area? Do we need it? And, and see if it's something that would benefit everyone, and I wanted to just put that little, that little pin in the board, too.
I like this because it has to do with long-range planning as well. It's, it's a chapter. It's a chapter. It's good for Stillwater.
You made a motion that you seconded. What was, what was that motion again?
Wanted to task staff to come back with more defined plans for how we might fund each initiative, and what, what the dollar signs might be associated with each of the three groupings.
So, cost and both sides of the equation?
Both sides.
And they ought to be able to have that by next week, probably, I think.
Talk to next meeting.
Well, we don't, I mean, maybe, I, we, give me two weeks.
Just kidding.
We've done a lot of preliminary work, I mean, not just on these projects, but others. I mean, we, we don't go into this blind, and we really try to make some good cost estimates. We've got some preliminary information. I just need to package it up and bring it back to council and present how it looked.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further questions?
Not at this time, sir.
Okay, let's vote. And that motion is approved, five to zero. Thank you. Capital Improvement Plan Ad-Hoc Committee. Okay, that takes us down to resolution. We have Resolution 2013-11, Resolution of Support for the Appointment of Dan Galloway to District Five Seat on Board of Directors of Oaklawn Municipal League.
Yeah, I've been serving on the Board of Directors for OML. My term comes to an end. I'm up for reelection. They, one of the requirements is to, to be eligible for reelection requires a resolution of support from the council. And I would respectfully, respectfully request that you pass that resolution. I'll submit it to OML, and then I'll be eligible for consideration for another term.
Is there something you want?
Sometimes I wonder, but.
Okay, any questions about this resolution? Is there a motion on Resolution 2013-11?
I move we accept the resolution for support for the appointment of Dan Galloway to District Five Seat.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Resolution is accepted, five to zero. Takes us down to city ordinances. None on first reading. On second reading, we have, what am I doing reading? Mr. Dorman.
Ordinance number 3233. An ordinance resoning attractive land located at 819 South Perkins Road from RSS small lot, single-family residential district to CG commercial general district.
Is there a motion on this ordinance?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. And ordinance, that motion passes five to zero. And then we have, there we go, we have ordinance 3234, also on second reading.
An ordinance resoning attractive land located at 919 East Ninth Avenue from P Public District to A Agriculture District.
Motion on this ordinance?
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion and a second. Also is approved, five to zero. And then ordinance 3235.
An ordinance resoning attractive land located at 498 South Mockingbird Lane from RSS small lot, single-family residential district to RT Residential Two-Family District and RTM Two-Family and Multifamily District.
Motion on ordinance 3235.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second on 3235. That's also approved, five to zero. That takes us down to reports from officers and the board. Mr. Dorman.
Request an executive session pursuant to 25OS subsection 307(c)(10) for the purpose of conferring on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property, financing, or the creation of a proposal to entice a business to locate within the city of Stillwater because public disclosure of the matter would, to be discussed, would interfere with the development of products and services and violate the confidentiality of the business.
Thank you. Mr. Galloway? Next, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Next Monday night, July the 22nd, we will be having what we're calling the Budget Fair. It's, it's a fiscal year 2014 public budget meeting. We're going to be at the Community Center from 6:30 to 8:30. It's going to be a little different format because I just feel that traditional budget presentations don't give people much of an opportunity to learn about the budget. You can't present in an hour presentation everything that everybody wants to know. And if you stand up in a row and ask questions, you allow an hour, and not everybody gets to ask their questions. So, what we're going to set up at the Lowry Center is we're going to have about 15 tables. It's going to be a come and go, where you can come the entire two hours. And at each table, you will find department heads of police department, fire department, development services. Every department in the city will have their own table. They will have detailed copies of their budget. You can go and ask them anything you want to ask about their budget, how much they're spending for whatever you want to know, what they're doing in their programs. You'll also, I'm going to provide each of the five members of the council a stationed table with a couple of guest chairs, where they can roam around, but they will be there. If anybody has a suggestion they'd like for the council to consider in the budget, sit down and talk to the mayor, or sit down and talk to Counselor Weaver, or Noble, or any of them, or talk to all of them, and have that opportunity to have a one-on-one conversation so they can hear what you're saying. It sometimes gets lost when you're making a presentation at the podium. It just does. But I think personal conversations are valuable, and they take them seriously. So, it's, it's an exchange where any citizen will have an opportunity to talk to your elected officials firsthand. They're the ones that vote on the money. You can talk to the department heads, me, and ask any question about the budget you want, and we'll try to explain it to you the best we possibly can. No secrets, no hidden agendas, just conversation about the city, its finances, what we do, what you want it to do. And the night belongs to the public, and we'll be there from 6:30 to 8:30 next Monday night.
Wonderful.
That's it. That's my two cents.
All right. Anything from council?
Just, I would just like to say that I know that a lot of the citizens and committees have done a lot of work, and I want you to know that as one city councilman, I appreciate it very much.
As two city councilmen, I appreciate it very much.
I second, third, and fourth that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Without a doubt. There will not be a radio show tomorrow, a counselor radio show tomorrow, so Mr. Van Ness will not be in studio tomorrow, so no radio show tomorrow. So, Counselor Noble gets the day off from, from radio.
Absolutely.
Hey, and while we're talking with our newest counselor, you have some special guests here tonight, don't you?
I do. I do.
Would you introduce them for us?
I would be happy to introduce them. My grandmother is here, from Joplin, Missouri, and my aunt from San Diego, California, Cheryl Ead and Juanita Martin. And they're such supportive family that they didn't want to stay home and wait for me to get home. They're visiting. They decided to come here, and we will have dinner after we get done.
Well, then, we'll hurry, we'll hurry, we'll hurry. Thank you. I'm glad you guys came.
You bet.
Okay, anything for upcoming meetings? Okay, that's going to take us down. Is there a motion to, on the- Okay, that's going to take us down, is there a motion to, on the executive session item to move into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second for executive session. Motion is approved five to zero. Yes, sir.
Junction?
Moving to executive session.